Clerk Segras, can you please take roll call?
Trustee Borninski.
I am here in Canton Township Hall.
Foster.
I am here online in Canton Township.
Engouli.
Hello, I'm here in the Canton Township Hall.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening, I'm here at Canton Township.
Let the record reflect Clerk Segras is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening from Canton Township.
Trustee Snyderman.
Hi, I'm remote in Canton Township.
I have Commissioner Acharya.
Hi, I'm here in the Canton Township.
Eggenberger.
All right. Hi, I am here remote from Northbrook, Illinois.
Oh. Green. Sorry.
You're which one you said?
Oh, I said Engel and then Green. And now Oaken. Singh. Weber.
Present from Canton Township, Michigan.
And Zuber.
Sorry, I'm coughing, so I muted myself here in Canton Township, Michigan.
You all.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Court.
All those in favor of adopting, although we do have some remote people, I'm sorry. Clerk Segras, can you please take roll call on adoption of the agenda?
All right. Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Houli.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segras, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Acharya.
Yeah.
Eggenberger.
Yes.
Weber.
Aye.
Zuber.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda adopted. So, we're going to start with our study session, which is a joint meeting with Planning Commission to discuss Township Master Plan. So Jade or Patrick, are you pleased to take lead?
Sure, I can get things kicked off. Welcome, everybody, tonight. We have a PowerPoint that has been put together for you, that is in front of you, and also will be sharing on the screen for everybody via Zoom to see. But we wanted to take an opportunity to get both of the boards together, the Commission and the Board, to discuss what the master plan is, the process, the history, and just kind of set the stage for what's coming up in the next few months. So Patrick's going to walk us through this PowerPoint, which is going to give more of an educational overview of what the master plan process is and why it's important for the township. So with that, I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Okay, thanks Jade. I will go ahead and share my screen. There we go. So, thank you all for attending tonight and going through the master plan update study session. We'll present for maybe about 15 or 20 minutes on the PowerPoint, just to give a background on the master plan, what it includes, why we have a master plan, and some of the best practices and the process going forward. We had previously done introductions with the trustees and the planning commissioners, and also with staff. Throughout the process, we'll also have other staff and other departments and divisions working with us in different areas of the master plan, as well as our planning consultants. First off, the question comes, what is planning? We can start with that question when we're updating the master plan. And the American Planning Association has a definition or a description of what it considers planning. The township is a member of the APA, and there are many valuable resources that the APA has that we have drawn on and will continue to draw on, especially during the master plan process. And the APA states that "Planning provides a vision for the community today and in the future." It reads that "The goal of planning is to maximize the health, safety, and economic well-being of all people living in our communities. This involves thinking about how we can move around our community, how we can attract and retain thriving businesses, where we want to live, and opportunities for recreation. Planning helps create communities of lasting value." The next question we get into is, what is the master plan? And in general, the master plan is the adopted policy of the community for its physical development over the next 20-plus years. Now, the township has many different plans. We have a Parks and Recreation Plan. We will have a capital improvement program. We have DDA plans. We have HUD and CDBG plans. And all of them have some overlap and connectivity. And the master plan is similar to those plans, where it covers mostly the physical development and many other elements as well. The basic contents of the plan include community data, trends and studies. It can include population, land use, natural features, transportation, things of that nature, just basically data, both current and past, as well as projections into the future. It also includes a public participation component that we'll get into in a few minutes. It includes a future land use map and a zoning plan. It also includes goals, objectives, and strategies, as well as implementation. That list is kind of a bare-bones list of what a master plan has to include, and we'll get into contents a little bit later and include many more items beyond that. Also, the general requirements and procedures are listed in the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Some of the differences that we see between a master plan and a zoning ordinance, sometimes they're mentioned interchangeably. There are some differences between the master plan and the zoning ordinance. The master plan is a long-range guide for the future. It goes 20 years and beyond. The zoning ordinance is the current regulations today of the community. The master plan is a public policy. It's adopted as a policy guide, and the zoning ordinance is adopted as law and has the force of law. The master plan has a future land use map that we'll see here in a moment, and the future land use map can often be general, whereas a zoning map as part of the zoning ordinance is very specific. It has very specific boundaries, some of which follow legal descriptions. The master plan can be flexible based on changing conditions. That flexibility can be written into the plan itself. The zoning ordinance has enforceable standards that are, some of which can be flexible, but there's procedures for any kind of flexibility that the ordinance allows. And then finally, the master plan is adopted under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, and the zoning ordinance is adopted under the Zoning Enabling Act. Two different state laws. Some of them overlap in terms of the bodies and responsibilities, but they have separate sections for the adoption of a master plan and the adoption of a zoning ordinance. So, an example of the future land use map is up on the screen here. And don't worry if you're not able to see all the text. This is more illustrative, where we look at the future land use map, where we have residential areas, commercial areas, industrial, mixed use, and a lot of other types of future land uses. And the land uses that are colored yellow, orange, red, those are future land uses that are residential, and they vary based on the density. So, in the far-right column where we have the legend, it'll state the district that it's in or the future land use classification, as well as the recommended density. And that density does correspond to a zoning district. So, if somebody wants to rezone their property or develop their property, the first thing that we look at is the master plan to see if it complies with the future land use map. If somebody's rezoning, we look at the future land use map and see if that future land use classification supports the zone that they're proposing. So, that's just one example of how the master plan interfaces with the zoning ordinance. So, beyond just the requirements of the state law, why do we need a master plan? If we go according to the state law, the Zoning Enabling Act requires a community to have a master plan if the community has a zoning ordinance. So, if a community has a zoning ordinance, it must be based on a plan to fulfill a number of functions. And I won't go through each and every one of these. They're in state law and summarized here. But the plan has to promote public safety, health, and general welfare. And it has to encourage compatible land uses and discourage incompatible land uses. It has to conserve natural resources and energy and meet the needs for residents for a number of different needs and services. Also, the plan has to avoid overcrowding and lessening congestion on roads. So, from a legal standpoint, following the master plan supports the legal foundation of the zoning ordinance. So, beyond just the state law, why else would we need a master plan? There's a number of different reasons. First is to implement the community's vision. We also want it to help sustain and improve our quality of life, to also plan for growth, including redevelopment and infill development. If we want to protect our environment, the plan can help us implement the policies that we want. We also need a master plan to anticipate change, because change will be inevitable. There's the old adage, failing to plan is planning to fail. So, our master plan has to address a lot of the things that we want to plan for. It doesn't mean that they'll always come to pass or that will be accurate in our projections, but the process is necessary, and it usually produces a good product. And finally, it supports other adopted township plans, such as the Canton Township You Belong Here Community Strategic Plan. In addition to the strategic plan, there's also, as I mentioned, the Parks and Recreation Plan, if there's a DDA plan or any CDBG plans that can be bolstered by the master plan. The master plan can be used to support those plans as well. There are a number of topics that our master plan should address, some of which were addressed a few slides ago, but we can expand on those and go into more detail. One of them is the history, both the geologic history of the township and this human settlement, going back hundreds of years. We have some of that in our master plan right now, but we could expand on that to tell more of a story of the township. Another item is the township's population, which includes items such as demographics, diversity, age, locations, and economics. This can be both current population, population trends going back several decades, as well as trying to project out future build-out populations based on the future land use map. The master plan should include a land use inventory of current land uses, including housing types by location. This is something that we're currently working on internally in the Planning Division as part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan in terms of data for the land use inventory. So, some of that data that we're helping to create for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan will also be able to apply to the township's adopted master plan. We'll also want to address natural features, including woodlands, wetlands, floodplains, soils, water features. And in addition to just the data, we'll also have policies associated with the data. So, it's one thing to have the data, but it'll be another to have policies about the data. Next is transportation, which includes not just roads and bridges and things like that, but also sidewalks and trails, transit, autonomous vehicles, electric vehicles, and what we call complete streets, which is a concept in state law that requires that the road right-of-way account for all users, not just cars. Another item that we should be addressing is our sewer and water infrastructure. It doesn't have to go into too much detail in terms of current infrastructure and what's underneath the ground, but it should address the township's capacity to service the current and future development. One of the unique elements of Canton's future land use map today is that there is a synchronous relationship between the future land use map and sewer capacity. So, the future land use map is designed based on the sewer capacity of the township to service the township. So, any changes to the future land use map, that'll either increase or decrease density, that needs to be checked against the sewer plan and the sewer capacity of the township's infrastructure. The next is public participation, including any methods, results, and trends. In the State Planning Enabling Act, the minimum public participation is a public hearing at the very end of the process. A public hearing meets the state requirements for public participation, but because it's at the end of the process, it doesn't really get any public feedback in terms of public opinion on the plan. So, oftentimes, it's good to have public participation early on in the process, including surveys, in-person meetings, or virtual meetings nowadays, and designing it to try to get qualitative, as well as quantitative, feedback. We should be addressing housing, including housing types, attached, detached apartments, senior living, et cetera, et cetera. Also, housing demand and housing choice, based on the residents' preferences. And also, future locations and future housing types. Continuing on with that list, it should include public health, including access to medical care resources, exercise, food, public safety, technology, including broadband and wireless technology. Another item at this point about these topics is that they are interrelated. So, for example, the last year and a half with COVID, for example, you could say that it's a public health issue, but it's also intertwined with public safety and, to some degree, technology as well. So, many of the things, the major topics of the day, we'll find that they are addressed in many of the topics that are on this list. So, these topics won't necessarily be done in isolation. They'll interlink quite a bit. Another item is climate change adaptation, including alternative energy and sustainability. Climate change adaptation is a big one. It can be both on the front end of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, whether it's solar panels, reducing energy consumption. But it can also be on the back end in terms of adapting to current conditions and future anticipated conditions of climate change, such as water runoff. It's a big one, and sometimes it can be a little bit of an engineering feat when we get into things like infrastructure, but it is something worth talking about in the master plan in terms of some goals and objectives that we want to see in the future. It should address infrastructure and capital improvements, including the synchronous relationship between the future land use map and sewer capacity. I think there was a typo on a previous slide that said asynchronous. It's actually synchronous, so we'll fix that. There is a synchronous relationship between the future land use map and sewer capacity. That's as the future land use map is today, and that's how we'll want to carry it forward. So, during the process, we'll work with the Engineering Division on the sewer capacity as we look at any potential changes to the future land use map. But we'll want to keep that synchronous relationship and make sure that there's the infrastructure available for any future land use changes. Getting into a little bit more specificity, we'll also want to look at some site-specific plans. And this can cover many different corners of the township. We'll want to look at infill, suburban retrofit design. For example, sites that may already be built out, but maybe the parking lot is too large, and we might want to see what an infill project can look like. It can also include corridor plans, an update to the Cherry Hill Village Plan, if it needs an update, now that we're, I think, almost 30 years into the future of when the plan was originally done. Any note in intersection plans, so any intersections of note or any nodes in the township that we want to take a closer look at, we can look at some site-specific plans for those. Next is redevelopment-ready communities best practices. The township is currently enrolled in the redevelopment-ready communities, and we're going through the certification process that will probably take several months to do. And one of the requirements of the RRC certification is that we adopt best practices into our master plan. So, we'll want to make sure along the way that we're working with our state coordinator, with RRC, making sure our master plan not only meets the state standards, but also lean on our state planner to see if there's any best practices around the state that Canton could benefit from. And there's a requirement to have a future land use map and a zoning plan. The zoning plan will just show how the zoning ordinance will correspond with the future land use map in terms of zoning districts. And finally, we'll want to have an implementation plan. We'll want to, if there's any tasks to be completed, we can give timeframes and responsible parties for getting those tasks completed. The adoption process is several steps, but they're pretty systematic. The first step is to determine the approval body. And the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, by default, lists the Planning Commission as the approving body, unless the legislative body makes itself the approving body by resolution. In many communities, especially in larger communities, the legislative body, the city council or the township board, is the responsible party for updating the master plan. So, oftentimes, in those larger, especially larger communities, the legislative body will formally adopt the plan. Regardless of the approving body, the Planning Commission is the body primarily responsible for preparing the master plan, and the process is collaborative. The next step is to determine the scope, the tasks of our consultants and staff, our schedule, and our budget. We currently have a consultant that was procured last year, McKenna. McKenna is also working with Leisure Services on updating the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and they currently provide onsite services to the Planning Division. They're our primary planning consultant that we would use to collaborate with us on the master plan adoption process. And we would work with them on determining who will do what, which tasks the consultants will do, which ones staff will do, and how we'll work together to achieve the plan. Another step is to determine whether to have a steering committee of board members and planning commissioners to meet periodically with staff or with consultants to check in on different steps, to give initial feedback before draft plans go or draft documents go to the Planning Commission at large or the township board at large. The next step will be for the Planning Commission to prepare and distribute a notice of intent to prepare a master plan. This goes to surrounding communities and other required agencies. This is a requirement of the Act, and it's a pretty simple process. After that, we would have the formal kickoff meeting with the Township Board and Planning Commission. So, tonight, we're introducing the master plan process. We're talking about some topics, answering questions, giving kind of a higher-level view. But after all the other tasks are completed, we'll have the formal kickoff meeting. By then, we'll know the process going in, the things that we want to see, and have a better game plan going forward. When we get the process started, we'll collect and analyze a lot of data. We'll also have public participation and community engagement. After the data and the public participation, we'll formulate the goals, objectives, and strategies, including the future land use map and the zoning plan. Once those are collected, we'll prepare the draft plan, distribute it to surrounding communities and other required agencies. At that time, we have our required public hearing, and then there's a recommendation and adoption of a plan. So, several steps. Some of them are quick, but some of the ones in the middle there in terms of formulating the goals and the public participation, those steps are much longer. And when we have the kickoff meeting, we'll have a chart, kind of a timeline chart, in terms of how those will go. And when we look at public participation, the formulation of the plan itself, those will be things that we get started early on, but they'll be long processes. And the last step is to distribute and approve plan. So, the next steps will be, this evening, we can discuss the general scope. We can discuss and answer questions, talk about specific topics and/or areas of the township to review, and any other related items that come up this evening or any questions. We can discuss whether to have a steering committee of board members and planning commissioners to meet periodically with consultants and staff to review the materials and provide feedback. And then finally, after tonight, we'll take the comments that we collect, and we'll determine the tasks to be completed by the township's planning consultants and staff. We'll prepare a project schedule, a scope, and a budget. And then after that, we'll schedule an official kickoff meeting with the Board and Planning Commission. So, with that, thank you again for your time, and we're happy to get started.
Great, thank you. Why don't we start with the people I can see first? Are there any questions or comments, or anyone in the room? How about anyone? Michael, can you? Are we able to see hand raises online? Okay, Nancy, go ahead.
You know, I think this looks great, and I am excited about the process. I think the thing that we want to make sure we do is, what I'm noticing a lot of times in the planning meetings, is that we have members of the community come, and there's something going on in their neighborhood, and they're like, why didn't we know that this could be changed? Why didn't we know that this area could be zoned differently? And so, I think we really need to make a push to make sure that everybody in our community knows about this and knows, you know, that we want their feedback and that we want them to be involved, because I think a lot of people don't have any idea that there is such a thing, that there's a master plan, and they only learn about zoning until it's affecting them. So, I think the more people we can get involved, I just think that that will make it more successful.
Is there any way, how do we open this up to the community? What are the steps to do that? I mean, obviously, put in the focus and things like that, but are there other ways to do it?
Yeah, I think Leadership Services has done a good job with getting public participation for the Parks and Recreation Plan. They've had events at the farmer's market. They've had other events where they've brought people in. They've gotten a lot of good feedback. So, there's a lot of techniques to get the word out in terms of, we can use the focus, the website. We can use cable. We can use Facebook. And we can work with our consultants in terms of some other ways we can get the word out, in terms of the process going forward and when the public participation events are.
Nancy, did you have something else? I heard you.
Well, I was just going to say the schools. I mean, I know we're combined with Plymouth, but if we really tried to focus in the ones that are Canton, you know, that's where the parents are getting a lot of their information. Or daycare centers, places where we can reach all the different people that are in our community that aren't always reading, things like our focus.
Jade, you had something?
Yeah, I just want to expand on something Patrick said, too, about going out to the public. So, the public participation will set up, you know, in forums like this, but we'll go to farmer's markets. The schools are a great idea, and when they have open houses, we can put things in buildings where the public is more active and you have larger groups. So, we can take it there and take our staff and educate out at events as well. So, that outreach can be a lot different than what we post in the focus and on the website and social media. We can actually get out there with the people, with the residents.
That's a good idea. Maybe we should look at some of the events that we can be at and start scheduling that ahead of time.
Yes.
It's a good idea.
So, once we, yeah, and then what you want to do is you want to go prepared with some information, and also have the dates that we're going to have, you know, public forums or public meetings or public hearings and things like that.
Andrew?
Yeah, I had a question about the data that we're talking about. How do we ensure that the data is comprehensive and not dated? And what's the process of, you know, gathering this data at the agencies? Or do we rely on internal data that the township has? And how do we go about that process? Especially when you talk of the demographics or the diversity or age. That would be very important and paramount in terms of how we decide.
Yeah, that's a very good question, because one of the areas that we can start with is, for example, the census data. And if we look at not just the 2020 census data, but the American Community Survey of the last few years, where they do a rolling survey of people. And we can look at things in our data where, for example, in Canton Township, we have a higher foreign-born population than most other communities. And one of the things that stands out there is we would want to know more about the country of origin and some things about Canton that draw people to the community. And some of that, we may not find out, we won't find out from the census, but if we have some background information from the census, that can inform our public participation when we do outreach to find groups and populations to reach out to, to get the information that we're looking for. So, I think it'll be a balance of data that's available from, say, the census or SEMCOG, and then taking the data out and our public participation and really getting the qualitative data, but also the quantitative data, like the census gives us, but also the qualitative data and a lot of anecdotal data from people.
Thank you.
I see a hand raised in Zoom. Was that yours, Nancy?
I think it's Summer.
Oh, Summer?
Oh, yes. I think both Dawn and I both have our hand raised. I was just going to say that it looks like a really good plan. I really like the idea of a community. And I'm happy to participate if you would like me to. But I would also say, if we are going to do community involving the HOAs is a great idea. And really making the language that's used accessible looks, because I think a lot of times, people don't understand what zoning is and what the master plan is, and how it can impact their lives and what's around their community. So, I think if you, not around their community, but around their home. So, I think if we can make that more relevant to people, people would be more interested in participating.
Thank you. Dawn, Zuber?
Yeah, I want to piggyback on what Nancy and Summer both said. And, you know, we just seem to struggle with people understanding that we have a master plan and in how we make decisions about zoning. and, and how we make decisions about zoning. I, I think it would be really helpful if we could try to use this as an education event. And one other means of doing that, that I think I've seen a lot of discussion about zoning on Nextdoor. So it would be nice if we could get some information that's, that's helpful for people to understand. And they may not enjoy reading it, but if we could put some stuff on Nextdoor, I think it would be great.
Yeah, and maybe as Summer said, we can send emails to homeowners associations and that we are doing these sessions, and, you know, if people wanted to come and join us and see what, we can get feedback from that. Because we have these meetings that I have gone to for the, you know, the recreation plan study sessions. We have done them at the summit, and we have also done them at the farmer's market. I personally have been to a couple of them at the summit. But, you know, for a community that has 95,000 population, 10 people show up. So it's, I, there must be some other innovative ways to get the word out so that we can have more community input.
Yeah, also along those lines, maybe we can do some online, you know, questions, put it online. Seems like a lot of people do answer those. So if we have some specific questions we want asked, maybe that could help too. Doug, you had your hand up, I think?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of things. First of all, to sort of also piggyback on what Dawn and Nancy said. And I'm sorry, I didn't get the name of the, of the lady who just spoke, but I will say this. And trying to engage the community is a great idea, and they should be engaged. But as I believe Patrick pointed out, or somebody else pointed out earlier in the meeting, a lot of times, people don't become engaged in zoning matters until it affects their property directly. People, and I think if anything, I think we've learned over the past couple of years about how people get engaged politically. Yeah, they get, they get fired up about certain things like COVID or elections and that sort of thing. But, and, and to me, zoning is certainly not mundane. But to things that have become a part of every day of life, they, they tend to, again, not, not take notice until it impacts them somehow, and usually negatively, unfortunately. That said, I'm not saying that we shouldn't try to make it educational and try to engage a community. But I, I hesitate just to, I hope people don't expect like 50,000 people in Canton to come out and, and comment on, on the development of the master plan, because I, I think that's unrealistic. That wasn't the main point, my, my comments. My question really is more to Patrick, I guess. You've mentioned a couple of different times about our planning consultant, McKenna. Are they, are they the only consultant that engages this? I guess, I guess my, and I guess what I mean by that, are, are they a one-stop shop in that they're gonna, they're gonna consult and make recommendations on all aspects of this, of the master plan? As you mentioned, how many different things the master plan addresses, including leisure services and technology like broadband and internet and such and infrastructure? Or do they engage other consultants to review and make comments on those, on those subtopics?
For the, for the most part, McKenna can be a one-stop shop in terms of all the elements of the master plan that we handle. There may be times when there's a specific task where they, either they use a sub or the township uses a separate consultant, just depending on what the task is. So if it's something where we're looking at broadband and technology, and if it's something more technological than a typical planning consultant would, would know, that's something that we would either use a sub or use a different township consultant for. If there, for example, if there's any infill designing criteria that we're looking to fulfill, or if we take some intersection of the township that may be vacant or underperforming, and we want a design concept, McKenna has designers and they have subconsultants that can prepare designs for that. So as we start to scope things out and discuss with, with McKenna, some of the things they'll, they'll certainly thrive at, such as public participation and knowing how to get good feedback. Some of the other ones that may be more, more technical, if there's any challenges there, we can identify those early and figure out what our best course is in terms of who can deliver that. Thank you.
Kate?
Thanks. Thank you, Diane. I want to also piggyback on what Summer said, that I really think that a steering committee is going to be important. I was previously on school board, as most people know, and there were a couple of times where board members were not involved in some big planning projects, and those turned out to be disastrous. And it's really important for both the board and the Planning Commission to have buy-in on this. And so that feedback is gonna be really important, I think. And that being said, I would, I would be happy to be involved. I think also, you know, thinking about different groups to try to get the word out to, perhaps our local houses of worship might also be places to reach out to to try to, to get more people involved and more people aware, just an idea. And then finally, we are working on a sustainability plan. And I know that that is something that can be incorporated into the master plan or sustainability as part of the master plan. So would like to either see about combining those two projects or possibly having, you know, some good conversations back and forth so that we make sure that we're not duplicating efforts.
Thank you. Stephen?
Yeah, thank you. So Patrick, can you, you, you talked about the ZBA and their process and the land use map. Is the land use map a part of this process? I was a little confused by that.
Yes, we have a future land use map with the master plan, and we also have the zoning map. And so the zoning map, if someone looks at the zoning map, they'll see what their property is zoned, what they can use it for, the list of approved uses, the setbacks and things like that. When we look at the future land use map, the future land use map, it's part of our master plan. That is, it's a policy, it's a policy guide. And when we look at, somebody wants to, if someone wants to rezone their property from a lower residential density to a higher residential density, they may say, I want to rezone from, from R2 up to R6. And would the township support that? So a lot of times, they're asking, what is, they may ask, what my opinion is, would I support that? And so what I do is I take out the future land use map, and I say, this is the adopted policy of the township. This is our future land use map, and the future land use map shows the classifications and the densities as well. So I let the, I let the map do most of, most of the informing. And if, if the map says four units per acre, I may tell the person, well, the, the map doesn't support the R6, but it may support a higher density based on the policy of the map. So the map is a, it's a guide, the future land use map. It's a guide for both rezonings, but also sometimes plan developments. If we have a plan development application, and they may want to use that is not necessarily in the district, we may look at the future land use map and the policies in the surrounding area to see if it's something that could be compliant with the, with the future land use map. But that will, any changes to the future land use map, they will have downstream impacts to future rezonings, possibly future infrastructure if there are any changes to the future land use map. And that'll be something that we'll reference back to as we look at that future land use map to see where and if it changes.
So that part, with, under this process, we will be doing some of that, looking at the future land use map and having discussions over anything that we want to change?
Yes, that's correct. We'll start with the future land use map that we have today. But we will be having several times throughout the process where we look at the future land use map as a whole and other parts of the township to see if there are any recommendations for either changes in density or changes in use or any other changes that will help fulfill the township's vision.
Part of what you mentioned and had on one of your slides was congestion. Is that only part of the zoning map or also your land use map? And using that as one of the topics that we look at when discussing the future land use map?
That's a, that's a good question. Congestion can be a difficult one to, to work with, because it's in the, it's in the state act that we have a plan that, that limits congestion. And we may have a future land use map that we're implementing, and we may have zoning ordinance and zoning districts that comply with the future land use map in terms of density and use. But then we may have a site plan application or a plan development application where it will exceed the road's capacity to service the use, in which case the applicant prepares a traffic study, and they may have to improve the road or improve signaling or improve some kind of accessibility to make sure that the, the road can adequately service the use. And so sometimes that's a case of the, the future land use map is longstanding. The property meets the density of the zoning ordinance. But there's not just the state, in the state law of reducing congestion, but there are also elements of our zoning ordinance that are performance standards where the traffic impact has to be analyzed at the point of site plan review. So that's something where the plan should be based on something that relieves congestion. But a lot of times, it's hard to tell what the future holds in terms of if that will actually reduce congestion or if we, if we think that based on the future land use map and the policies and the expected, the expected improvements to be done either by a developer or the township will allow for traffic congestion to be avoided. So we'll have policy statements for that.
If, so yeah, if we see something or have a thought or an idea or want to have a discussion on a certain aspect in a certain part of the community that could have an effect, a positive effect on congestion, we can have that discussion and if agreed to, put it into effect in the future land use map.
Yeah, and as we look at it, now that the township is, is approaching build-out in many different areas, and there are areas where we know, based on traffic studies, where congestion is a problem, we can take some of that recent data. We can look at the future land use map and think about, is this something that we want to retain in terms of future densities? Or are there any kind of road improvements that, that could be made? Not necessarily in the near future, but at some point, that will allow the, the current future land use map to be implemented? Or do we have to rethink some of the areas based on the township's infrastructure and ability to service them? So yeah, those are, those are discussions we'll be having throughout, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Last thing is, you mentioned whether the board passes a resolution to accept this plan. And I think five years ago, and we were, the people on our township board that were on the board starting in 2017, 2016, 2017, were a bit surprised that we didn't have that ability. And so I want to make sure we have that discussion. I, I think both planning and the board should be approving this document. I think it's really important. And so we need to show buy-in from both organizations that after we've done the work and come to agreement, that we, both the commission and the board approve it. So my thought is that we should do whatever we have to do in terms of altering the process to ensure that the board also has the ability to make that statement.
And that's a major reason why a lot of elected bodies choose to do that. And even in the most collaborative communities, the legislative body may take that on in terms of the formal adoption process, because the legislative body wants to put the, put the community stamp on it to say that this is adopted, even though the, the law says, it defaults to the Planning Commission, that the elected body has adopted this, and sometimes gives more weight to the document itself when the elected body of the community has also reviewed it in collaboration with the Planning Commission and has adopted it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Diane.
Great presentation. Thank you very much. Yeah, and I agree too with Stephen. And I, I would like to see a steering committee of the boards. And then as for another way to communicate to the residents, not just to communicate about when you're going to be having these programs, but also to educate them, maybe with cable, doing some PSA, it might be a good, I think a great idea just to educate the residents that they do have a say, and they can't change what's already been done. And then lastly, on the sewer capacity, and this is for Patrick. Do you, do you pretty much have the sewer capacity so you know what we can build? So we're, okay. All righty. Thank you.
Michael?
So I was looking at our future land use map, and there's a, just out of curiosity, there's a, an item called office residential. Just out of curiosity, what is the benefit? Because I see maybe about a percent, if that, of the township's future land use. A map is identified as office residential, and I'm pretty familiar with those parcels. Yeah, so what is office residential versus a mixed use?
I think in cases where we've seen the office residential, it's, it's been in areas that are a transition zone between higher intensity commercial and residential areas. And that's been one where, there's, there's been one site in particular that I had a question about that's currently zone residential, master planned residential. And it's at a, it's at a corner, a major traffic corner, and somebody was asking about, you know, what do I have to do to put an office there? And my advice was, well, the master plan doesn't support it. But if you were to apply for a future land use map amendment, there's no guarantee it would be approved. But then when they were looking at different, future land use classifications, I said, office residential is probably the least impactful if, if you were to try. I wouldn't go for a commercial just because it can open up a number of different commercial possibilities. But an office residential, it can be a, a good transition between if you've got neighbors and you want to do a non-residential use, the office residential classification can be something that puts more limits there. As well as if you've got a hard boundary between a commercial area and a residential area, and you want something that's in between on either side, the office residential classification can be a good, a good transition. And it primarily corresponds to our office zoning district.
A lot of good input so far, and I agree with almost everything that's been said up to this point. I like the idea of a steering committee. I really do, to do some deep dives into this. Would love to have some conversations about what we think Ford Road might look like. There are other areas I know, like down on Denton, where we have a, we have, we have like the last remaining like family farm in Canton Township that's still got that agricultural exemption. But I see on the future land use that that's medium density. And so that might be an area where we could scale it back if we wanted to find capacity somewhere else. There's a lot, and I'm not, like, I don't want to cherry pick the map right now, because that's part of the reason why you talked about having a steering committee. So I won't waste everybody's time. But I think that that's a meaningful discussion, especially because when the board began meeting earlier this year, we talked a lot about our goals, and one of the goals was, was healthy environment. And while we are not California, I do know that California for two years now has been trying to ban single-family houses, which makes up two-thirds of the housing unit stock in California. Part of the reason they want to get rid of it from a zoning standpoint is it's extremely bad for the environment, and it helps exacerbate a housing crisis, because it's not the most efficient way for people to live. And I'm not proposing we would do that in Canton Township, but I am proposing that we might want to, when we talk about topics that we should consider in the master plan, and we talk about housing, and we're talking about housing type, demand slash choice, we also might want to talk about environmental impact when we talk about it from a zoning. also might want to talk about environmental impact when we talk about it from a zoning standpoint, if that's allowed under the zoning enabling act and the planning enabling act. Because if it is, I would love to have that conversation. Every rain this year has resulted in excess flooding. And drain technology for 60 years was just increase the capacity of the drain and the water goes away. Well, after a while, we realized we were all sending it down to Dearborn and Dearborn Heights and that's why you get 20,000 FEMA complaints because all the water from the surrounding communities is rushing into that community. And at some point, we have to ask ourselves, are we good corporate stewards? Are we good neighbors and are we good citizens of Southeast Michigan? Or are we a nuisance? Are we pushing our water into other communities? And the beautiful thing is, is we retain it through the development project program, as you know. But there is still surface runoff, there is still excess runoff. And those are things that we need to talk about as we look at, and I know there are like four or five sewer assessments going on, you know, drain assessments going on in Canton right now, which will be a huge cost to the residents. They will be very shocked about when those things hit. But again, if we're just focusing on increasing the capacity of those drains, one, that will not solve the flooding issues in their entirety. And two, that's just going to get the water downhill faster into Dearborn and Dearborn Heights so that there's more FEMA claims. So at some point, I would love it if, if our master plan brought in to it the healthy environment component and we started talking about from a sustainability end like we were talking about there. But I also want to make sure we don't break the law because everyone's a NIMBY. Everybody's a NIMBY, you know? I want to tell you how to live, but I don't want to have to live that way too, right? Like, I want good, efficient housing, but my God, I want to have my backyard and I love my single-family home. I don't want to have density, but I want density when it comes to housing for people. So everyone's a NIMBY. So the question for me, I think in, in that regard is going to be, do, do the people who participate and does the public understand the legal requirements, right? Because under the Fourth Amendment, I mean, there are protect, we have private property. You have access to private property, you have private property rights. And anytime the government gets involved, it's considered a taking unless we are legally authorized to do so. And so I don't want to see us making, and I know you would never allow this, but I don't want to see us making aggressive claims and taking aggressive stances that aren't supported by law because I don't want to spend general fund money defending and losing legitimate lawsuits to private property developers because we decided we were going to take power that's not granted to us by law. That's, that's something that really concerns me. And as people talk about it in our community, Chick-fil-A is one example, on the, and Facebook, BJ's Warehouse that's going to be coming up is another example. You know, you could write a book about the lack of understanding the community has over land use policy. And that's okay. For the most part, people expect the government to take care of this stuff for them. They don't want to become an expert. They don't want to be educated in that. But if we talk about educating the public, we have to understand that for the most part, I don't think the general public, and this includes me in my private life, is overly interested in getting a huge education in land use and zoning laws. What they want is the government to solve their problems and they want to be able to focus on their family and spend little to no time thinking about it. And when the beautiful field or forest that's next to their property gets clear cut for the first time ever because it's owned by another person privately and they decide they're going to build on it legally, they come to us and they expect us to solve the problem for them and they don't care if we exercise reasonable caution in how we go about doing that. And I don't know how you, I don't know how you close that gap with the public. So we can talk about public input and I think it's, it's a worthy cause. We could try to educate the profit, the population through that as a component and I love that. I absolutely love that. I'm watching the Michigan Redistricting Commission do that right now where they're having the community submit maps, even though they're the authority that's going to approve the map. And most of the maps submitted by the public don't conform to the Michigan Constitution and they will not be adopted because they would be illegal. But people still are participating. It's a good thing. So, you know, so aside of that, I think the, the small group is good. I think making sure we don't break the law is fantastic and I don't want to spend money, I don't want to, I don't want to give Polk the million dollars because we decided we were going to illegally turn down one of their developments. And then if we could at some point legally factor in global climate change and environmental impact to our future land use map, that would be fantastic.
Thank you. Yes, I had spoken actually to Patrick earlier. He and I were exchanging notes about kind of what you were talking about, sustainability and moving into climate change. I mean, we have approximately, what, a two-year build out left in Canton. And so as we're looking at that, you know, do we make sure that the developers are looking at not any more concrete and asphalt, but how do we maybe make more, make parking lots or something a little bit more environmentally friendly so that they, we don't increase the runoff like you had said before? We don't increase heating around those areas, which of course are, I'm reading about that are causing a lot of storms, you know, the heating of the concrete cities and the asphalt. And so how do we do that? Do you, you know, do we, does this committee look at what kind of ordinances we can create around this or any zoning that we can create around this? So, you know, the greening of this is important. Also in talking about even, you know, like Ford Road, one of our goals is to have indigenous planting. So the DDA has been talking about that. So that's one aspect of it. And so Ford Road is good doing that. So where else do we do it? How do we encourage the developers to place indigenous plants so that they're not all plants that have to be torn up and put back in which cause, and even these Michigan indigenous plants save water because they don't need the drainage and irrigation. So how do we encourage developers to do that? I know you've started also even looking at, working with developers on electric vehicle chargers. I know that Ann Arbor put an ordinance in recently and in terms of requiring so many electric vehicle chargers per spaces because we know that the automotive industry is changing their vehicle lines over to electric. They recently had a lawsuit. I mean, our interns came in and presented that a couple of weeks ago, they had a lawsuit because they kind of, you know, they thought that they, the church that they formed the lawsuits that they had too many. So where do we find that balance? You know, do we create an ordinance? Do we create zoning or do we just encourage it? Because we know that things are going that way. So those are some of the things that I talked about. Of course, educating, like Dawn and the others had said, you know, people don't understand the zoning process, they don't understand our limits in the law, right? A lot of people are coming and saying, oh, well, how could you allow this to happen? Well, not understanding that that's someone's personal property and we only, as long as they follow the zoning rules, there's only so much say that we can have. And being on the planning commission before, I know how many times we had to explain that to people. You know, they would come before us and be mad that this field is now disappearing even though it had been owned by somebody for a long time. So I think part of those education, you know, things that we have, we should probably talk about that too. Educate the people on the laws that we have to follow and where our hands are tied. Technology is important. I know even one of the things that Ann Arbor is doing is not only stating how many electric vehicle chargers, but also even prepping for technology. So when a developer comes in and does something, that they keep the empty conduits and they make sure the transformer sizing is there for future technology so that we're not ripping it up later. So I think I'm trying to understand if we have to create ordinances around that or just be included in zoning or just encouraging. I'm thinking that's an important part that the committee should look at also. Do we have any more hands? Because I can't see. Tanya?
Yeah, I, you know, I am a novice in this. I'm trying to understand the zoning laws and.
Tanya, I'm sorry, could you get a little bit closer to that mic?
I'm trying to understand, you know, the zoning laws and how we can, when we are thinking about having our strategic plan with healthy environment and walking parks, walking distance from every community, how do we incorporate that in this, in the zoning laws that we have? And how do we, my, my concern for the future master plan would be, what changes can we make, which as Anne Marie said, about the future climate change issues that are coming up and which we faced this year majorly because we had so many flooding, so much flooding happening and is it because? And then as Michael said, something about, think, to think about how we can, because every house here requires, you know, you have to have certain lawn and there has to be two trees that needs to be planted. That's probably done by the homeowners association. So I am, I am trying to understand how much of the zoning ordinance affects this because those things is like, you know, having your grass watered and things like that, even those impact our future climate issues in the community. Because as we go on and on, you know, there's, there's a limited supply of water in the planet. So how long can we sustain that as we keep growing in Canton? So these are some of the things we need to probably think about. I was looking at the master plan right now that was done in 2017 and we don't talk about those issues there. So maybe these are some of the things we need to think about in our future planning.
That's good points, thank you. Michael?
Ask if I may, great points, Tanya. So from a process standpoint, since we're reviewing, we're starting the review of the master plan process. And on one of the slides, on page six of our handout, kind of goes through the master plan adoption process, there's like some pretty key things, one, two, and three are determined. Is it the expectation that we would answer those questions tonight? Is the expectation that planning and MS, and municipal services would bring forward recommendations at some point? Are you looking for an answer to that? One, does the board want to be the approving body? Two, do we want to, you know, what's the budget basically? Like, yeah, go free rein, bring in a consultant and go to town. And then do we want a steering committee? Is that kind of what you're asking tonight?
Yeah, I can chime in on that. So I, I think it's, it's a combination of both. Determining the approval body, I think that's pretty clear. I think Patrick and I have heard that pretty loud and clear. So what that will take is a resolution that we will prepare and bring back before the board of trustees as an RBA to be passed. So that, that will be on us and that will be forthcoming. Determining the scope, the tasks, the consultants, the schedule and the budget, that's something that we will work with. We will work internally within MSD and planning and bringing back the approval for the budget, for the actual master plan. I do want to take a minute to notate that us being involved in the RRC program, the redevelopment readiness communities program, there is dollars available that they will contribute because we're a part of that towards this master plan. I don't know if we have that, that dollar amount yet. Was, is it 20? I think it's up to 20 or 30,000 for a number of tasks. So up to 20 or 30,000 for various steps within that RRC program. So once we, we, now that we're engaged with them, we will move forward with that too. So that will help offset the cost, but we will also be bringing that back before you in regards to the budget. But as far as the scope goes and the daily tasks and stuff, that'll be all handled internally. And then determining whether to have a steering committee, I think that was pretty loud and clear tonight too. So I think we've answered that question. Now it'll just be determining what that committee looks like. Obviously, a couple of board of trustees and a couple of planning commission, or planning commission members would be ideal. We can't go over four because of quorum. But actually over three, I guess. So that will be yet to be determined, who's going to sit on that steering committee.
Foster would probably be a natural choice.
That would be, that would make a lot of sense, yes.
Now, each planning commissioner has gone through training, correct? Through the MTA or through some type of organization or am I incorrect in that?
Some of them have been on the commission longer than I've been here. I unfortunately don't know that answer.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that Pat, I do know Patrick. I guess we could ask him.
Yeah, with all the rest, since I've been here, I don't know if there's been much formal training. We, we do have a budget for training and there are specific training for planning and zoning essentials. There's some specific for master plan training. And there's also training that is available through Michigan Association of Planning, through MTA. We're members of Michigan Association of Planning so we can get any of their training modules. I've actually given their training before in a number of communities as a subconsultant. And it's, it's a really good overview and a good basic training. There's also a lot of specific training like site plan review and some of the topics we discussed tonight, there's training available too. So that may be something throughout the process we may want to put in either early in the process or some other time where we look at some of the available training and, and get some background on some of the topics before we go ahead with some of our, our goal setting.
Can I, I just want to comment on, I think there was some questions in regards to the master plan and if there's a lot of zoning ordinance changes or resolutions or policies that get created with this master plan. And really, I just want to reiterate that the master plan is a guide for the township. So all of that will be incorporated, but it'll be because of the master plan, we may then go back and try and adopt ordinances or create ordinances or change current ordinances that we have to meet the goals of the township moving forward. So there won't be any hard ordinances that get passed with this plan. It'll be as a result of the plan that we come back and then put those into place. So, because I heard a couple of questions about this, I just wanted to make sure that that was, we won't be going that far into the weeds with the plan. So hopefully that makes sense.
If, if you are, well, so my recommendation would be that anybody who participates from, especially from the board standpoint, goes through that training. And whether I'm selected or not, if we're going to do the training, I would love to do the module to, because I just, it's exciting.
Yeah, no, it'd probably be very beneficial.
Yep. I, I feel like.
If you're into that kind of thing, I guess.
I, I need that, so.
Patrick and I had a discussion last week after the meeting that we should, I think some of the new board members should have some sort of a training to understand because we get RBAs quite frequently where we are, we are, you know, we are approving something and, you know, a zoning change and we don't know a few terminologies, a few things that need to happen.
Yeah, I totally agree and I think that, that'll be beneficial. I think that's why we wanted to do what we're doing tonight too, is to kind of educate more about the process, just so that everybody's on the same page moving forward. I do want to just mention that I think one of the bigger components that we may see in this plan that we have not seen in plans prior to in Canton is the redevelopment. Because this, if we're only two to five years out from being built out, we are going to see more and more redevelopment. So there's going to have to be more conversation in regards to that. That could affect Ford Road. I mean, we've got a couple of sites, big sites now that are already looking at being redeveloped. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that I think that'll be a bigger focus within the plan this time than it ever has been in the past. Because it really wasn't a topic. It's always a topic, but not a big concentration.
And out of that also comes our economic development plan too. So a lot of ties. Thank you. Summer, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly say that there are trainings available online and there are also books that you can get through the Michigan Township Association on Planning that are very helpful if people want to learn more.
Yes, I said in a couple of those too, they are very helpful. It would be great, we could even do a board session on it maybe.
A broader conversation would be, I think, as we, because one of our board goals is about onboarding processes for new board members, we might have a recommended curriculum that we establish, kind of what would be the base level of knowledge to be an adequate trustee, right? To have a basic understanding of the Charter Township Act, to have a basic understanding of planning and zoning. Those might be recommended trainings that we try to provide as a baseline.
So my vision for that, because I've been sort of tasked with it, and while my arm was broken, it was put on the back burner, sorry. But the, my thinking was that the onboarding materials would be for that period of time when board members were seated but had not yet done any training? Because I felt like there was a gap there. And I think, you know, we can, we can adjust that too, but that, I thought that was the immediate need. But also I, so I do have a list of what we want included and some of the things you mentioned are definitely on the list. One thing I haven't done yet, which I have been meaning to do, was to reach out to Patrick to get him at some point when he has time to sort of write a little brief tutorial on the planning process.
We brought Carol Rosati in in 2016 or 17 when we all first got elected. Her god into us about zoning and planning. And she, she came in with all those lawsuits where, you know, NOVA had to pay a developer a couple million dollars and Royal Oak had to pay a developer a couple million dollars because the, the board had decided that they had power that they weren't entitled to. And we walked through the whole zoning process, planning process and kind of how a right to develop is vested in a property, right? Is it consistent with the surrounding zoning? And what's cool about that is it gave me a base level knowledge where when I read Patrick's resolutions, his formal resolutions, I can see where he's going through those checklists. This is consistent with the future land use map. This is consistent with the zoning. This is consistent. This is consistent with the surrounding zoning. And, and you can see, and that, that, those, that criteria comes from case law, and you start seeing where we are intentionally putting all that stuff in there. And that takes the guesswork out of it. Now, the problem is for the resident who comes in here and expects us to be Harry Potter and solve their problem for them, is we can't, because we can't violate case law. But the beautiful thing about that is it lays it out for us, and we kind of understand what's required of us. What's discretionary, what's not discretionary? When I can vote no legally, when I can vote no and have consequences, and when I can vote yes, right legally, too. I'm not, I don't know that we need to do that again. We have a document. I have it in my office. But that was a meaningful thing. I think Kristen Cole may have put that on.
Yeah, we can, we can bring her in again. I've sat through, not here in this community, but I've sat through her presentations before, and she's very good. She really does show you the legal aspect and the legal side of those decisions. But from a more, more education and informative, we're actually on the MTA website right now and looking to see if there's training. We could actually bring them here for both the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission. So we'll, we'll stay tuned on that.
It could even do, it could be remote, too. Great, thank you. Any more hands up?
I see nothing. Chandru's over there.
Chandru?
So, great ideas from the legislative body, and, you know, it's very inspiring to hear some people talk about conservation and the environment. And so I was just thinking about how do we map this whole, you know, the division of the legislative body that finally goes into the master plan? So if we, when we hire the consultant, an external consultant, can this vision be shared with him, you know, the strategic vision? So when things are put into place, that vision is in mind, because there could be a comparative analysis of other townships across the country and see, you know, are there ways to incentivize good behavior, as to say, in terms of how do, how you go about changing the, the thinking of the average citizen in terms of making him more aware of the, you know, of the environment and the cost, and the good points that Michael and Tanya and Anne Marie and everybody brought in terms of water conservation, or just the fact that you could be flooding your neighbor, the neighboring cities. So these are important ideas that, you know, a citizen might not think about. But, you know, for, for every citizen, for me, it's just basically a transaction of how much I pay for the water. If I use more water, I just pay more. But beyond that, you know, the, the cost to the communities and the environment is something that's very important. And I think if there's a strategic vision, that can be translated to the consultant. And if there are small factors, or small programs, or small ideas that can be implemented or incentivized, that would be a great idea.
And there are many things that we work on, where, when we look at topics, a lot of times we'll be working in tandem with our consultants. So there may be topics where the consultants are working on it, where township staff is working on it, and our redevelopment-ready community planner may be working on it in terms of everyone and all hands on deck, getting data or best practices, whether it's statewide or nationwide, and bringing them back for consideration. So we'll, we'll have a lot of resources to bear in that effort.
Any more hands? No hands. Anyone else in the room?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure. Can you go up to the microphone, George?
George Miller, I lived here in the residence since about 1980. I've complained many times to past trustees, and some of the people that are on this board right now, about some of the ditches on Van Born Road and Sheldon Road. On this last two or three months, this big flooding, those ditches drained to nowhere. There's a woman over there that had a RV. She went through there, told me at 5:00 in the, in the morning, it wasn't taped off or anything, and there she sat, RVs in trouble and water damage to it. Years ago, there was flooding on the north side here. Ford Road was all flooded because of the creeks. This is 20, 25, 30 years ago. I'd like to know why these civil engineers are not predicting a worst 100-year rain, and these holding ponds that you have, or retention ponds, that hold the water for two or three days and predict what those creeks in the Roots River can take. That'll stop some of that problem. You have an overflow. Past administrators told me here, down Morton Taylor Road, goes down by Palmer and so forth and back out north. I'd like to know why there's flooding in people's basements here. And the last, it's happened a couple of years ago, and it's happened in this tremendous rain here. I'd like to know some of those questions. You have a big runoff in some of these places, big parking lots. There's a massive runoff when you have a four or five-inch rain. You have to have a retention pond that holds that, possibly, possibly. I want to know why these engineering outfits are not, and civil engineers, and even in the township here, are not predicting how big a pond they can have to hold that 100-year rain. So the sewer gets flooded, and it comes up in the basement through the weeper tiles. I'd like to know why that's not being taken care of, especially with that overflow sewer going down Morton Taylor Road, evidently. It's on there. Another thing is, I'd like to know, since we're on the planning here, my five minutes, if I may have it, there's been a dump over here, one dump for years, on the cleanup, a brownfield. I'd like to know what the future plan is, and I've complained for five or 10 years for that piece of property. It's a brownfield. It's a, nothing but, they've walked off and left it, somebody has. There used to be a dump there, and the state hasn't cleaned it up unless they've done it in the last year or two. It's always something else, it's more pressing than that. I'd like to know why that, what the use, the township bought that? What the use, what use they have? I've asked past administration and the planning department about that. Evidently, you have a five or 10 or 20-year plan. I'd like to know for that piece of property. And some of the people on this board, I've addressed that issue to you before. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Patrick, I mean, I guess one thing we were, one thing to ask about, which we've talked about, is the runoff and the drains and the rains we've had. So, and we're going to have these drain meetings, you know, Patrick and Jade. So does, is that part of what's going to be addressed also, some of the flooding we've seen?
Well, yes. The petitions for the drainage districts, that's the, that's the point. The residents will end up paying for that as the county has those hearings, and then they determine the scope of work. That'll be assessed to all Wayne County residents, depending on where the drain is at. But then in regards to future storm, I do believe engineers are looking at that with every single development that comes in, and every redevelopment that's come in. And unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you as to why it continues to flood, but we're not the only community, so it's, it's a, it's a regional statewide issue. And I, I know it's a topic of conversation at a lot of meetings, both at the county and at the local level. So we continue to, to look at solutions for that.
I know, even Debbie Dingle, I think, has gone, she's seeking money to have, say, backup generators for some of these pumping stations even, to help with the flooding.
I tell you right now, it's not going to get better.
Nope, no.
I don't think any improvements are going to solve the flooding issue.
Nope. That's correct. That's why we have to look at the retention ponds. And I know that during our planning meetings, we do a lot of that, too. But you're right, this has to be a big overview of what we have.
I mean, the fundamental issue is, you've got every development from 1834 to 1992 doesn't have a retention pond. They just push the water to the street. Where's that water go?
Yep, we've seen it come up our dryways.
That's where it goes. So, it'll be interesting to see.
And I think, you know, this master plan process, some of the environmental topics that we're going to discuss are going to address some of that at a local level. So when we do have these projects moving forward, we are going to address part of that in our master plan, from a, from a holistic view. And then, you know, move forward with implementing it through the, our normal processes of planning and development.
I see, Ercheck is on here as an attendee. If you get him started on, I think, is it Act 20 Drains and things like that, he'll, he'll go crazy and he'll tell us to be quiet. First addiction over those drains is county.
Surprised he's not calling my cell phone right now.
Right. Promote me to panelists.
I'll, I'll hear from him as soon as the meeting's done, I'm sure.
We can let Bill talk.
You can get him going. He'll go a good 30, 45 minutes on that one.
Yeah.
Any other comments in the room or online? Okay, great. Thank you for the presentation. Should we put this online, then, on the website or Facebook for people to see? And what are our next steps, then? I mean, forming the committee, we talked about that, but...
So I think we'll be coming back to do a formal kickoff meeting. I'll be getting with you in regards to setting up the subcommittee, the steering committee. And I, I think what we'll do is we'll put together a target schedule, what that may look like, a timeframe. It'll be tentative, but then it'll give us a guide to, to proceed.
Okay, so we'll, when we come up with that schedule, we can publicize it, try to get people there to help out in how we form the committee. I think we've heard some people volunteering already. All right, great. Let me see. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment? George, did you have any other additional public comment?
Yeah.
Is there any public online?
I'd like to know why we, we have a van out back for picking up children, latchkey after school, why that possibly can't be fit into a schedule to pick up old folks every now and then to go to U of M. Some of the tests they have have to be done at U of M, chemotherapy or something, or San Joe's. A lot of people in this area go that way. Nankin Transit doesn't go, because it's out of Wayne County. You have the facility on that van, the equipment for 20 grand, that's what it runs about, to go over there and take people every now and then to San Joe's and U of M. The veterans maybe take care of themselves. I'd like to know, I go back to this other thing on, on this runoff, I'd like to know why the county doesn't take more responsibility. Down Van Born Road, that floods. Down for years, down on Sheldon Road, south of Michigan Avenue, that floods. Ditches haven't been cleaned since Jake Dinkle Day retired in this township. You guys used to have an old shovel, and you used to dig from one end of the township ditches to the other, year after year. I'm sure some of those people are still living, and they'll vouch for that. I know, you go over here, and I've been at meetings, I'd like to know why some of the ditches are not cleaned out with brush and stuff. Wayne County, or this, you guys buy a machine over there for cutting grass for 15,000 or 20,000. I haven't seen it being used. Isn't that true, that that's been bought in the last 10 years or so?
But I know...
That's not being used. There's been a street sweeper here, it's not being used from time to time. I've been told, because guess what? It was for the builders. Well, the builders make their mess, and guess what? They have a road bond, and if they don't buy that, the county confiscates the road bond. Or guess what? Maybe they don't have building permits. Builders have walked off in the past and left $20,000, and guess what? We have a $5,000 road bond, and it's your baby. Well, it doesn't work that way.
Thanks, George.
So I'd like to know what can be done to improve this flooding situation. Engineering outfits that develop all this stuff, they're supposed to calculate that.
Thanks, George. Also, on our, our open meetings, open issues list with Wayne County is the drain, cleaning the drains. That was one of the things we talked about. I just want to let everybody know, also, just George's other question, in terms of driving to U of M, Nankin Transport will drive into Wayne County. They will drive to Livonia, and he specifically called out U of M. A lot of U of M facilities are now in Livonia, and they can do a lot of the services that Ann Arbor does. That's why we, but we are limited to Wayne County. So, but we can transport into Livonia where those services are offered. Okay, well, thank you. Any other public comment? Public comment? Public comment? Great, thank you. Any other comments on anything else, any other items, anything coming up? All right, great.
I'd just like to thank the Planning Commission for coming and joining us.
Yes.
You did show up, it was a lively discussion, and I'm really impressed with Jade and Patrick. They've got a good operation on, it's a great project. It's a great process. So, thanks.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Planning Commission. It was great to see all of you again. Any other comments? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Oh, moved.
Support.
Thank you. Clerk Segrist, please take roll call on the motion.
Let's start with Zuber.
Uh, yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Hagenberger. Did we lose her?
Oh, she's muted.
Hagenberger.
Yes.
Knightman.
Ah, yes.
Flavens.
Aye.
Segrist.
Aye.
Rampfudek.
He forgot who he was. Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Horninski.
Aye.
It's all backwards. Great, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Meeting adjourned. Have a good night.
Good night.